Yeah, it's okay to go?
Yeah, sure.
All right, if I might call the meeting to order, I ask everybody to rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance. And if I could ask Selectman McCarthy-Weigh to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence. A good friend of Fairfield's, Bill Barrett, passed away recently, and actually several of us have just come from his wake. He's somebody that became a fixture at many of our community meetings as he attended those with his daughter Susan Barrett, who's been a longtime community servant, also serving on as a state rep on the Board of Finance and on the Fire Commission most recently. Bill was there, he's served our town well, and is somebody that we will miss. Thank you.
Can you unmute?
Yes. And then, on a slightly new topic, in a new jacket, I'd like to welcome former First Selectman Sherry Stenick to turn our Pet of the Day into Pet Tips.
I'm only coming to give you a pet.
Excuse me, Ms. Stenick, you might want to stand at the podium.
I thought that wasn't the microphone, sorry, it's a new microphone. I was on my way here when I found out the Pet of the Week was not going to be here, and I was just about in the driveway, so I decided I would share with you a tip that I got that was almost worth the vet bill that I had last week. I have a 90-pound German Shepherd, and my mother has got a seven-pound Maltese, both of whom needed medication. The Maltese, I can barely get the pills in because I can't get my fingers in the dog's mouth, and the other dog will find every way to spit them out, eat what's around it, whatever. But my vet gave me a tip where you take white bread, like Wonder Bread, you roll up a piece of it with nothing in it, you roll up a piece of it with the pill in it, then you roll up another one with nothing, you give them the one with nothing, they say, "Oh, that's delicious." You give them the one with the pill, they say, "Hey, wait, was something in there?" Then you give them the one with nothing in it again, they go, "Nope, nothing was in there." And I give my German Shepherd, my 90-pound German Shepherd, five pills a day, and she looks forward to taking them. And the other one does the same. So it's worth the price because if you have a pet, whether it's a big dog or a little dog, you know it's pretty difficult to get them to take those, so there you have it.
Sure, thank you.
One more thing, I do have two pets that somebody might want, though. One of my clients has two gray cats, her parents, one just died, and the other's at hospice, so the cats are two gray, six-to-eight-year-old female cats. They don't claw, they're not declawed, but they don't claw, they have a scratching post, the furniture all looked intact in the house, so I can tell you that I believe that they don't claw. And one was sitting there calmly when I walked in, and the other one ran for the hills. So if anybody is interested in one or both of those cats, again, six-to-eight-years-old females, let me know, thank you.
Ms. Stenick, how would somebody let you know?
You can call Animal Control, and they can call me, thank you.
Do you have a number for Animal Control?
It's in the phone book, but I'll give you my telephone number, is that what you'd like? (203) 395-2737 is my number, and you can call, and I would be happy to connect you with those cats, thank you.
Sherry, thank you very much.
Billy Plumb, though.
All right, next up, minutes, to hear, consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting February 9th, 2014, I have a motion to accept.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion or changes to the minutes? We okay?
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, so that's done. Next up, some appointments, to hear, consider and act upon the following appointments, we'll take these kind of one at a time. Shellfish Commission, George Zigma, unaffiliated, 76 Oxford Road, for a term of 11/10 to 11/15 to fill a vacancy for David Thornton, who resigned.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Zigma here? Very good. Would you mind coming up to the podium for a moment?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much for throwing your hat in the ring here, we appreciate you stepping up. Are there any questions from the board?
No, just thank you.
All right, any, all right, any questions for the public or comments? All right, seeing none, back to the board, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Zigma, congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Now that you're officially on, do you have any questions for us? Next up, to hear, consider and act upon the following appointment, Nancy J. Lyons to the Affordable Housing Committee, Republican, 252 Village Lane, term 11/13 to 11/17 to fill a vacancy for Deborah Owens, whose term expired. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Ms. Lyons here. Very good. Would you mind coming up to the podium? And again, thank you for throwing your hat in the ring and helping us out. This town is very much driven by volunteers, it's one of the things you see when you see all the different commissions that we put folks on. Any questions from the board?
Just a comment, and this will be true for both, I know that those being appointed today are folks who have had conversations with the committees and with chairs, and in fact, I know Nancy was at the last Affordable Housing Committee meeting and has been involved in the conversation, and I think will be a wonderful addition. So thank you for stepping up to serve.
Thank you. Kevin, do you have any?
Thank you very much.
All right, just one, could you let us know how you got interested in affordable housing and why this is meaningful to you?
Well, my entire career, most of it, has been in the real estate industry, and I did a lot of financing of affordable housing in New York City, where 80/20 housing, and worked with the different commissions, then the municipalities and the bonding authorities. So it's always kind of been an interest of mine, and the projects in Manhattan were enormously successful, so, as you can well imagine. And as I, you know, I've lived here since 1992, and I've seen as, you know, as people get older, they move, because they can't afford to live here, so it's just something that I'm interested in.
All right, well, thank you, thank you.
My pleasure.
So a little bit of focus on senior housing there.
And young people as well, or people that, you know, are firemen or policemen.
Well, no question, I think strategically, one of the issues for Fairfield is we don't have senior-friendly housing, both in terms of the facility, but also in terms of the affordability, and it's, I want to thank you for stepping up and having that focus on it. Hang on for just a minute. Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, next up, to hear, consider and act upon the following appointment, Cynthia Samarko, Republican, 106 Village Lane, term from 11/13 to 11/17 to fill a vacancy by Lisa Winjem, whose term expired. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, Cynthia, would you mind coming up to the podium? And again, thank you for stepping up the plate here and helping out on this very important board. Any questions from my colleagues?
Go ahead.
I would just add the same, that Cynthia was at the last Affordable Housing Committee meeting, and I see the chair here as well today, and we're grateful that you're willing to step up and serve in this role.
Thank you.
Just a quick thank you, and to both yourself and Nancy, we had a very interesting conversation last week with Operation Hope, and one of the topics that bubbled up was affordable housing, and how do we look at it differently, creatively, and how do we find some other solutions that, you know, have not yet been done? So it looks like there's a lot of great effort going on, and thank you for joining that effort and our volunteer team.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
All right, and I kind of have the same question, what got you interested, what piqued your interest in affordable housing?
Well, I've lived in Fairfield for the past 16 years, and I've seen different committees' appointments come up, and when I saw something from Kathleen Griffin come out looking for people interested in committees, I really wanted to get involved, and as Nancy said, you see a need in this community for affordable housing, and not only for the elderly, but for people who are teachers and firemen, and college graduates that can't afford to live in the town where they grew up. And if they had that opportunity to have to stay here and raise their families the way that I did, then they would have the same wonderful experience that we've had in living in this community. And I just think it's an important issue for our town to be able to deal with.
No, thank you, very definitely, very definitely. Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board, any further comments on the board? Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations, and thank you.
Excuse me, what?
Yes.
Certainly. I'm not sure what the court called or the orders are, but I just, first I wanted to thank the board, I'm Steve Grothwall.
If you would just step up the podium, let the world know who you are, because you're now on Fair TV.
Yeah, and I know I have to be on good behavior because I saw what happened with Sherry, so I'll do exactly what I should. So I'm Steve Grothwall, I'm the chair of the Affordable Housing Committee, and first, I want to thank the board for appointing Nancy and Cindy, they're going to be great additions to the committee, one's a lawyer, one's MBA, they both got good experience, so thank you both for serving. That still leaves us with one vacancy, and so if anybody else knows of someone who wants to step up and join us, that'd be great. And I just want to mention that we're in the midst of doing the planning to renew the Affordable Housing Plan, and we have a series of meetings coming up, tonight we're going to meet with Operation Hope, next week, going to meet with the Housing Authority and P&amp;Z, and then the Clergy Association, Human Services, and then on April 1st, we're hoping to have a public forum over at the Board of Ed building on Kings Highway, and I'm hoping that everybody will come and give us their input, so that's all.
And just Stephen, if I might, you turned this into a bit of a PSA spot here, but since you're recruiting volunteers, if anybody's interested, they should call my office (203) 256-3030 and ask for Kathleen Griffin?
Yes, they can, or they can call me directly, my cell phone is (203) 258-8147.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, I'd like to welcome the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce to come up and give us a brief update.
Good afternoon, thank you for inviting me here today, my name's Beverly Bellis, I'm the new Executive Director of the Fairfield Chamber of Commerce. I've given you a packet of information, there's a lot in there, I didn't quite know what to bring today, so I did put together a small presentation on an overview of the chamber, where we were, where we are today, and where we're heading. I joined the chamber again last June as the previous Executive Director had retired out, and the board had decided that they wanted to reinvent the chamber, give it some new life, some new energy, some new enthusiasm, and as such, I was hired to come in as the new Executive Director, along with a new office manager. And one of the first things that we did was to create actually a one, a three, and a five-year strategy plan, which wasn't in place before, so we pulled that together so that we could start our blueprint to implement what we needed to do. We have come up with a new mission, we want to really help sustain the businesses in town, to attract businesses, to work closely with the town, and to give these businesses and help them with what they need to be profitable and successful. Our immediate changes were, as I just mentioned, to get a new Executive Director and a new Office Manager, needed to stabilize and regroup the chamber, just a little bit of history, the chamber had become just a little stale over the last couple of years, became a little insular, and again, we need to bring life to it, get out into the community, get with our membership, and really get them on board, letting us know what we can do to help them. I've put together goals and budgets, one of the main things is to reestablish the relationship with the town. We're working very closely now with the town, and that's a real pleasure, and we're working on various projects for the community and for the businesses as we move ahead. We've also expanded the Board of Directors, we've increased the board by seven people, and the reason for that was to really have the board reflect a very nice cross-section of business types, big, medium, and small, and a variety of specialty talents and skills that can help the chamber move ahead into the future. We've also established some nice subcommittees on the board so that they can help me move ahead and get things done. With regard to the membership, one of the first things we did was to really assess the wants and needs of the current membership, and for those businesses that did not renew, so that we could determine what is it that we need to change in the chamber, and how can we help these businesses in town. We're looking at the pricing model, we're adding benefits into the membership, so again, that we can help them, and a new website, so we can help cross-promote their business and bring that out into social media, so that if any of the members are having any events or promotions, we're there to help them get that out into the community and into our membership as well. And one of the most important things for me is to stay in touch with all these businesses and to have them see my face. The chamber and the town, as I had mentioned, we're under a very nice collaboration, we've worked together on the sidewalk sale days, Restaurant Week, all the shop and strolls, on the 375th Town Committee, and a great new promotion coming in, Get Your Business Online, which is a result of Mr. Tetrow going to Mayor's Conference, and Google coming on board and offering some website development, so we'll be announcing that, and I think next week, that press release will be coming out. I love education, and one of my plans is to really integrate with schools and students. I'd like to create a scholarship program, internship programs, I've already brought some of our members into the entrepreneurship classes within the high school so that they could speak, and ultimately, I'd like to establish a Chamber Fellows Program, so these students would actually receive a certificate that could go on to their resume and help them as they move forward in their lives and their careers. Working on a speaker series, different content focus, including banking, marketing, legal, health and wellness, all designed to deliver content to business owners that can help them, again, sustain and grow their businesses as well. Our marketing committee is rebranding us as the new Chamber of Commerce. I've given you in your packet, and for those of you who are in the audience, I have extra folders up here if you'd like to take them with you. I've put together a new directory, which I happen to love, my background is educational publishing, so I worked very hard on the design and the content of that directory, but we have all our members in there, and again, it shares everything that we're doing. Working closely with the press, right now, we're working on a new logo that will reflect the new chamber, although I still am insistent on keeping that Dogwood Flower, because I love that. And I'm trying hard to really create the awareness within the community with regard to what the chamber is doing as well. Some of our achievements to date is, year-to-date, we have 47 new members, that's an increase of 68% over prior year for the entire year, so I'm very happy with that. And that's a result of me being out in the community, referrals coming in, and the new board members who have come on, who are also referring businesses to the chamber to join. I'm working with all of the state reps, Kim Fawcett, we've co-established an Economic Spotlight on Women-Owned Businesses, so working with her on that. I've joined Brenda's Business Council in town that meets quarterly, and with Tonya, I participated on a panel for healthcare reform, so working with everyone in town. And we've increased our leads group, I'm very, I know how important it is to promote shop small, so you'll see that logo in our directory, and I talk about that all the time, and we want to keep spending in Fairfield, we want to keep the money in Fairfield, so I will be promoting that as much as I can. And as a result of that, we have a Chamber Bucks Program, which is a gift certificate program, that can be redeemed at any of the Chamber member businesses, so again, that helps keep the spending in Fairfield, and then it helps our Chamber members as well. We've also established a Young Professionals Group, I don't know what the exact cutoff is, I'm certainly over 30, but no, but that's a great one, so we've got young people, young professionals coming in and putting together a group for us. So we know that Fairfield is fantastic, we love Fairfield, it's a great, great community, the chamber is very happy to be in this, I'm very happy to be with the chamber, this community, again, working with the town and the small businesses, and every one of our members wants every member to be successful, so we work very closely together to make that happen. I've also given you a list of the executive board members, and that's it. Any questions from the board?
Beverly, thank you, a couple things, one, I love your enthusiasm since taking over, you've really injected that into all the chamber and all the chamber events.
Thank you.
I know you're working with Mark Marhart?
Yes.
On a number of events that you mentioned here in terms of working in a town, and I see you everywhere, you're just out there in public, and that's just great. I think one of the keys in, as you mentioned, is having a number of initiatives to help make Fairfield, or keep Fairfield, business-friendly.
Mm-hmm.
And I look forward to kind of an ongoing dialogue, to look for things that town can do better, in terms of improving the climate for business, and making sure that we are as business-friendly as we can get, and I think that Get Business Online was something that definitely piqued my interest at the Mayor's Conference, I'm thrilled that you and Mark are working together on getting that out here, and it's really initiative to make sure that every business in town is online, from two perspectives, one is that 97% of buyers shop online or look online before shopping, and so that we want our businesses to make sure they're getting a piece of that market, and I think the other stat was only 58% of businesses are in fact online.
Exactly, I think it would be higher, but yeah.
And I think it's, I won't steal all your thunder and let the promotion come out, but it's a phenomenal deal, Google's behind it and helping out, and I think it's great for Fairfield and Fairfield businesses. And I did have a chance to sit in on one of your speaker programs.
Mm-hmm.
Senior Vice President, John Traynor, who's a Fairfield resident, but also Senior Vice President at People's United Bank, that gave an update on Fairfield County economy and the Connecticut economy, and tremendously insightful, and just a great way to start your day, so thank you for putting those spirits on.
Thank you.
Any comments from my colleagues? Go ahead.
Comments, thank you very much for the update, it's amazing, all the work that you have done and will be doing, and one of the ones that piqued my interest was the idea of the Fellows Program, coupled with the fact that I recently learned that our high school business classes are more and more popular with the students, so it's a great way to partner, I think that's a phenomenal, one of the many phenomenal initiatives. I do have a couple of questions.
Yes.
You've mentioned the Shop and Stroll into Spring, or that was one of the lists, and I love the Shop and Stroll for the holidays, do you have a date for that event?
We do, that is coming up in April, April 3rd.
April 3rd, okay.
It's Thursday, yes.
All right.
And it's Shop and Stroll into Spring, and it's, it'll be a little different in the respect of the holiday event, we had some of the students, high school students come down and sing and holiday songs and walk up and down the street, so we won't be having that for spring, but the concept will be the same, and Mark has worked with the designers, created all of the promotional materials and postcards and all of that, so we've been working closely on that, we just had a meeting the other day on that, and that'll be coming out very soon in the press release on that as well.
Great, that's exciting. I also wanted to ask where people could buy the Chamber Bucks, in fact, I know a lot of school parents for teachers like to give those, and people have been asking about that, so where can people go to purchase those?
Well, thank you for asking that, because I think in the past, it was a little confusing, and they were being sold at a bank in a bank over here, right now, they can come right to our Chamber office at 1597 Post Road, and we have them right there.
Great, and one last question, is the membership primarily from downtown, or do you find that it's now expanding, or is and has been from all over town, the Black Rock part of town?
The focus, it's a little bit of both, or actually, it's many, we actually even have businesses outside of the Fairfield community coming in, we have some businesses from Shelton and Milford, some in Bridgeport, but within Fairfield, I'm making sure that we get out to all of the quadrants within Fairfield, so that we're over at Greenfield Hill, Corinne's Flowers is one of our members, and over in Southport, you know, so all of the businesses up, and also up on Black Rock Turnpike, so not just downtown, but Fairfield as a whole, and I think that we're getting a nice representation across the board of all those different business areas.
That's great, thank you for your work.
Thank you so much.
Kevin?
Thank you. Beverly, thank you for your very exciting and enthusiastic update, it's great to see the direction that you're going, and the programs you have in place, and how you're getting out everywhere and touching all of our business and our business owners, so that's great, thank you very much for that. I would like to ask you just a couple of questions, could you provide us a little more information on, you know, what the benefits are to becoming a member of the chamber, and why it's an attractive and important thing for a local business owner to do, and how to go about getting involved in becoming a member?
Right, okay, the chambers in general bring business people together to network, to meet other business owners and companies, and to see how they can work together, how they can help each other. So there is a lot of networking within the chamber through a variety of different events. Each month, we have what's referred to as a business after hours, where a member will host the event, it's usually from 5:30 to 7:00, and they serve beverages and some apps, and it gives an opportunity for people to come together and talk. We all love social media, we all love marketing, we all love that, but there is nothing better than face-to-face in establishing a relationship so that you can meet someone, you say, "Hey, the energy is here, we have the same ideas, let's work together." So that's one of the real advantages of that. The website is the second advantage that we're working on now, because we will absolutely be able to cross-promote and cross-market anything that the member is doing and get that word out. So if a dealership is having a President Day sale, we're on it, it's on our website, we send it out, so we're helping them also market their business to improve the return on that as well. We have a couple of leads groups, which works like a BNI, if any of you are familiar with the BNI group, so we put together, actually, we just put together a new one, so now we have two of those. We have lots of sponsorship opportunities, volunteer opportunities, and we have different kinds of partnerships where the members can come into the chamber and work on those. Our website, albeit not the best in the world right now, but there is information on the website with regard to membership, the application is online, and the fees are based on number of employees within the business.
Great, well, good, thank you very much for that update, and one thing you touched on was the in-person, you know, communication, the networking, and as great as our world of technology is, and with all the opportunities it does provide us, there's still nothing greater than the handshake and the eye-to-eye in the getting together with another business owner to help them understand what you're doing, vice versa, in getting to know each other, so that you can all grow. And I think that's a wonderful opportunity for all. You also talked about a number of things that you're doing with the town, and it's great that the administration is working with the chamber to move programs and the platforms forward, but thinking larger, what else can the town do? You know, what's down the road a couple, three years, what are other chambers doing across the country that are either different, bigger, more creative, or more involved with their local governments? Basically, what else can we do to help?
Well, I think first of all, the relationship is key right now, and I will start to bring you in to some of our forums and some of our speaker series as well, so as we start to collect information, and again, collect wants and needs, it is really bringing the town before the membership as well, kind of for Q&amp;A announcements, I receive a lot of press releases from Jennifer, and we disseminate all that information, but I think if you look at other chambers, and right now, we're still growing and getting our blueprint together, are those bigger speaker series events, so to speak, and you are attached best to Hartford and the legislation and policy and all of that, and I'm starting to disseminate that information as well, which I'm not quite sure if that was really happening before. I don't quite have my crystal ball yet, I'm still a newbie, so with regard to what the town can do, could I get back to you in a couple of months?
Well, the point is, we're here to help, and whatever we can do, we certainly would like to do for you. like to do for you. And my last question is more of a big-picture question. It's probably not answerable in this forum, but I'll put you on the spot anyway. And, you know, it's about how do we help people who are starting businesses? For instance, I know it's beyond the scope of the Chamber to help an individual organize and put together a business plan and start a business, but there seems to be a pattern over the last 20 years or so where you'll see different types of businesses popping up, and they come up in sequence. And just quickly off the top of my head, if you go back 15, 20 years, you know, there was a run on delicatessens, and there's been a huge run on pizza places, and there's a huge run more recently on yogurt shops, and then there's a huge run on southwestern Tex kinda restaurants of late.
Yes, yes, it's true.
And these openings of businesses tend to follow, I believe, national trends of corporations and franchises and things like that. And then, the market seems like it gets quickly saturated, and some of these small business owners who have invested their time and their life savings, and frankly, their families and these businesses find themselves struggling to make ends meet and to compete, because, you know, there's now a Kadova right across the street from Mo's, as an example. But these things happen, and they seem to happen in streaks, and then they seem to go up, and then they seem to come down. So, I don't know what type of business or economic advice there might be out there for people who are looking to do these things, but there seems to be a solution that we're missing. Not necessarily the Chamber or the town, but we're just not hitting the mark. It seems like they come, they go, they come, they go, and we don't always, you know, have enough diversity in the types of businesses that come in during any, you know, point in time, if that makes sense.
That does, and that's a very, very good question. I think with regard to the restaurants, I think there doesn't seem to be any end of how many can come into Fairfield, which is awesome. It's a destination point. And I think why they are coming here, I mean, there's such a variety of different restaurants right now, too, for different palettes, so to speak, and I think that is fantastic. To your point very early in your question, and I'm right on that, just so you know, I have a very strong business background. I come out of corporate America. I've rebuilt some companies. And you had mentioned a business plan. I think what we're seeing is a lot of entrepreneurs coming into town, not so much the bigger restaurants, but really the small businesses coming in, entrepreneurial businesses. And you're exactly right. There is one business in town, she was a teacher, decided to do a life change. She opened up a business. Did she quite do everything correctly? Maybe not, but that's where the help can come in, I think, is providing business planning, looking at a P and L. How should a P and L look? What percentage do you want to give to marketing? How can you increase your bottom line? How can you do it in stages so that you can get your profitability that you need? And I think that's an important service and something that actually, I think maybe we can all work together on through a speaker series, but also maybe on your site and on our site, anyone who's thinking about coming into town, maybe we can find someone who could do some mentoring and review a business plan before they go to a bank and start to ask for money.
Right, and that's, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna address kind of two of the points you brought up, because you have brought up multiple questions within your comments there. But one is that it was great news. I was meeting with Senator Chris Murphy, and one of his staff came up and said, "You know, Fairfield is the place for restaurants in the state. That's the word in the state." It used to be West Hartford. It's now Fairfield.
Yes.
And when you hear that from somebody who's not directly connected to Fairfield, it's amazing, very, you know, obviously very heartwarming to hear that we have that distinction. Having grown up here, I promise you, 40 years ago, we didn't quite have that distinction. Both restaurants were very nice, but not quite what we experienced. And we could go to Dairy Queen for dessert after.
They're still here.
But the other piece that I think, and Kevin, I think you hit on a very strategic piece, and I think that's one of the initiatives that just started, which is the Business Incubator Program, started by Cleavon Properties, Fairfield University, and the town. And it's kind of headquartered in operations right above Fairfield U bookstore. They've got their first three businesses that they're kind of running through. There's kind of a contest to get in. People apply, and you have to, your business idea gets to be evaluated. But I think the idea of getting help from the Fairfield U Business School, getting help from resources that Cleavon Properties can bring to bear, getting help from the town and putting all of it together, is specifically just to address now. They're just starting, but this type of incubator program, there's a state program similar to this that gets started. And then, if you look around the country, this type of program is popping up in different places. I think specifically addressed your concern about when you're a small business, too often, you don't know what you don't know. So, it's not that you're ignoring it. You just don't know you need to do it.
That's right.
So, I think it's an extremely powerful concept, and I'm very excited about it. And I also think it puts both Fairfield on a map in this initiative, but also, when you look at the number-one issue across our country, certainly across Connecticut, it's jobs. And it's small businesses that generate the job growth. It's not the big Fortune 100 companies. It's the small businesses. So, the idea of being able to generate more small businesses really leads to job growth, which really propels the economy more than anything else. And as much as we're Fairfield, we're starting part of that, and we've got our piece of the puzzle there helping out. So, I'm excited to hear that. And so, I think that your points were right on the money.
Yeah, good. And those are wonderful follow-up points as well. And as you probably have figured out by now, I'm a fine ass person as well. And, you know, and without getting into weeds too much, you know, when you're starting a business, and I'm gonna pick on the yogurt shop because that's front of mind for me because my boys make me go there quite often, you know, and just rough numbers, you know, small place, you rent $4,000 bucks a month, you know, it might be manageable. You know, you sell yogurt for six bucks. Maybe your cost of sales is two bucks, but you make it four bucks on each one. It sounds good, looks good, feels good. Hey, this is a great idea, until you realize that, geez, you know what? With those numbers, I've gotta sell 1,000 yogurts to have a gross margin of $4,000 just to pay my rent before I can pay one employee, before I can pay one bill, before I can pay one family member, or pay myself, or pay any taxes. And I think people quickly, you know, find themselves in a situation where they're overwhelmed, because the rents do, the rents do, the rents do. And the first 250 yogurts I sell every week, and the margin that goes along with that, not to mention all the other expenses, goes directly to that. And there's not always enough left over to really grow the business and sustain it. And that's where, when I go into a business and I look around and I see the activity and I keep an eye on it, and I see the, you know, I can kind of figure out what they're selling or what they're making on things, basically. And then, they pay the franchise fees, and they pay the couple hundred grand upfront to get into it, and the next thing you know, you have a very unsuccessful business owner. So, I think the education process that Mr. Tetra talked about and the programs that you are initiating will go a long ways toward helping people make good decisions upfront so that they can have successful businesses going forward, and we can all thrive and create those jobs. So, thank you for that, both of you.
I agree.
Just jumping in, just to add to that, as you were talking about some of the advice and speaker series and mentoring, I'm also thinking about the Fairfield Public Library Jobs Series, and I'm wondering if you're partnering with them. Are there some speakers, I think, that they've brought in there, and have you had conversations with them?
We are, and I'm happy to say that they're now a member of the Chamber.
Fantastic.
They have joined, and we've already held a breakfast there, and we gave them the opportunity to share what they have at the library to the Chamber of membership with regard to all the unbelievable databases they have and workshops and speakers. So, they have a very, very robust program, and yes, we are working together.
Excellent.
Great.
Are we done?
No. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Very much. Thank you for joining us here, and good luck out there.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. Next up, we have the Executive Director from Pequot Library. Martha, if you'd come to the podium and provide us with an update here on how things are doing over in Pequot.
Sure. I'm Martha Lord, and I'm the Executive Director of Pequot Library. I'm also a resident of the town of Fairfield for the last 34 years, and have raised four children here with my husband, and happy to announce that they are independent adults at this point. And as we at the Pequot Library are looking to, we appreciate this opportunity to speak to the selectmen, the town employees, and to the Fairfield taxpayers. We are very pleased to really talk and tell our story, because Pequot Library is a very, very much an irreplaceable value, an unduplicated value for the town of Fairfield. The mission we serve is to bring literature, art, music, science, and the humanities to our community. And it's the same mission, frankly, that we've been serving for the last 125 years. I'd like to just tell you a little bit about the history of the library, because it's so unique in the town, and I'm amazed how many residents don't really know the history. There was a woman, Virginia Marquand Monroe, who was a benefactor, actually, originally. She lived on Pequot Avenue in a home that she had inherited from an industrialist uncle who had left her a lot of money. And she engaged an architect and started building the Pequot Library, believe it or not, in her backyard, behind what was a grand white mansion that's similar to some of the other large homes in Southport. Once the library was completed, what she did was she tore down her mansion, creating the great lawn that's there now at Pequot Library, and she set to put together a collection of books and materials that would be unique to the library. And the library itself, she envisioned it. She had created it and wanted to make it available to all the various socioeconomic groups in the town. And therefore, she formed an association that would take it over. And Pequot Library actually was the first free public library in the town of Fairfield. She quote, "wanted the library to be free as the heir to all." And so, she left the library under the control of an association. And the library, she envisioned it along with being a lending library as having the, really to be a cultural center for the town. And in that regard, she built a very unique auditorium space along with the reading room that was there. But today, Pequot Library is a fully functioning, public, free public library as well, and we're fully integrated with the town of Fairfield's public library system and a statewide public library system, all the statewide system as well. We are a lending library, but we're far more than that. We offer over 350 unique programs per year, and those have to do with literary events, musical concerts, art events, issues of the, various issues of the day. We hosted, there was a forum for Metro North to hear people. We have actually, this evening, there's an event talking in our auditorium on energy and conservation of energy here in the town of Fairfield, and that's co-hosted with the town committee. And we offer all sorts of children's education programs and teens' programs, and 10 large community events. Pequot Library is really, today, a library for the 21st century. We're not, we don't have a lot of spaces where people come to the library and quote, kind of hang out or spend all day there. We are much more of an events-driven library. People come, they show up for the event, they're engaged, they, it's really a high cultural impact-type event, and they leave enriched, entertained, and educated. We are a warm, welcoming cornerstone of the community, and our staff is known for its helpfulness. And I thank anyone who has been in the library, and I personally invite everyone to come and visit the library, particularly on these cold winter days when we have the fireplace burning, and there's nothing more charming than to sit and read a book or look through one of the periodicals. We also partner with about 30 nonprofits in the community, and we host many of their key events. The Aspetuck Land Trust, then, many of these are their annual meetings because of our great spaces. We've got the Aspetuck Land Trust, Connecticut Audubon Society. The Fairfield Public Schools hold a number of their events. Near and Far Aid, Wakeman Boys and Girls Club. We partner with the Westport Arts Center on music programs. We have a very well-deserved following among a number of constituents, young families, inquisitive adults, senior citizens, music enthusiasts, clearly, and arts and art lovers. We do have rare book and manuscript scholars who visit us, and we have people who are really interested in that intellectual, engaged programming. But let's talk a little bit about our unique assets, because we're not a duplication of the Fairfield Public Libraries, which, by the way, are fantastic, and I'm glad you brought up the jobs and the business side of things, because they are fantastic in that. The Pequot Library is unique. We're housed in a historic building that was built 100, over 120 years ago, on three acres in the center of Southport. And we have an auditorium space that is probably one of the finest in New England. If you haven't been in our auditorium space, you need to come and hear a concert there. It is fantastic. We also have historic reading rooms that are open for cultural activities, small group meetings. If you have a group and would like to hold a meeting, we are happy to see if we can arrange that for you. We have a great lawn that we host various family intergenerational events. We've got the Fourth of July Bicycle Parade. It starts in the center of Southport and goes two blocks to our front lawn and ends there where we have intergenerational games. And it's open to the public, and we serve refreshments, and we enjoy seeing and celebrating the Fourth of July there. We also have various, we have a campout in June, on the great lawn, and if you haven't been there, it looks like Tent City, with all the various families and children of all ages. The other things that we have are, we have the Perkins Art Gallery, where we host various art exhibits, and that's primarily been showcasing local artists. But what is also unique is that when Ms. Monroe formed the library originally, she and Reverend Holcomb, who was the current, then the minister at the Southport Congregational Church and had previously been involved at Harvard University, started collecting Americana documents. And these were rare books, manuscripts, and really unique, nationally-recognized materials. And we are unique in that regard throughout the country. And we have on display at various points during the year, in our special, we have museum-quality cases where we put these exhibits on, and we encourage all of the citizens of our town to come and visit them. We have a John James Audubon. It's a Bienn edition, and it's an elephant-sized folio that, if you haven't seen it, is fantastic. We've tried to put it, we actually did page turnings and had it on Facebook last fall, and I hope people saw that. Also, we have original documents from Gone With the Wind manuscript. We had Charles Dickens 200th Anniversary exhibition that had original letters, actually, those that the library owned and local, another Fairfield resident who had some original documents who lent them to us to share, because we could put them on display safely for all of our community. We had an exhibition on loan from the Museum of American Finance here on James Madison this year, and we partner actively with the Beinecke Rare Book and Manuscript Museum at Yale, where actually, the majority of Pequot's most valuable documents are stored there for safekeeping. And, but they are available there as the Pequot Collection, and there's actually a book that's published, Yale University published, about the Pequot Library collection of items there. So, between the building, the unique programs, the special collections, there's no duplication here. We do have a lending library, and we work closely with the town of Fairfield's municipal libraries, but there's a lot of unique things happening. Pequot Library really puts Fairfield on the map, and we're proud of that, because people from all over the region come to our programs, particularly the music programs. And we know that we are, we have members actually from 21 zip codes throughout the state, and so, those people are coming for the various activities and events. And you'll see us regularly. The media has been tremendously supportive of us in terms of promoting this wonderful value to the community. And so, you can see those regularly posted online and through the print media, the news media. The New York Times had an article about the Robert Frost exhibit that we had last year. The New York Times had an article about the Robert Frost exhibit that we had last year with his original Christmas cards, and that was written up. And I, you know, we've been in the New York Times twice in the last two years, and I don't know how many institutions in Fairfield have been, had that same type of coverage. So, how, but, we do reach and promote the town, and we have various fundraisers because the library is constantly seeking to cover its budget. And we have, our biggest fundraiser is the annual summer book sale. I think probably all of you have been there, it's the last week of July, and it is phenomenal. We have hundreds of volunteers, primarily from the town of Fairfield, who work at that book sale. In fact, Mike, I think you have run a cashier, a cash register there a few years, so thank you for that. But why is funding so important to the Pequot Library? We want to thank the town of Fairfield for supporting the library with its funding through a grant for close to 100 years, actually. And we have historically been receiving funding in the last few years of about 32% of our operating budget. The rest of the budget, the 68%, is really, comes from individual donors and from our various community fundraising events. Going back to the Association Library, I think it's important to understand, in the state of Connecticut, there are 91 libraries. Pequot is an Association Library, but within the 91 public libraries in the state, close to half of them are Association Libraries as well. And those are libraries such as Greenwich, Westport, New Canaan, Wilton, all of the, many of the towns that you, you know, we tend to think ourselves as peers. And in that regard, the, it's not unusual for a library to be an Association Library. What's unusual is the fact that Pequot Library raises close to 70% of its operating budget. That's far more than any of our peers, and there's only one other library in the state, actually, because they happen to have a very sizable endowment, so they're able to raise even more than our 70%. But let's talk about those individual donors. Some people think, oh, well, we just ask a few people and they write big checks that support our library. That is not the case. Our average membership is $140. So it takes a lot of members to make up our 68% of the, of a million-two in an operating budget. And many of those, many of our members clearly are distributed throughout the whole town of Fairfield, but also throughout the region of Fairfield County. We do have the major fundraisers which raise the significant amount of our money. But I think it's important, I have to say that hearing about the budget announcement last night, it was extremely disappointing to know that Pequot Library's request had been reduced. We had requested $350,000, which was the same as we had last year, and we had worked very hard to keep our expenses such that we would be able to function with that flat request. And in fact, our expenses have been flat, really, for the last, at least, I had numbers going back to 2008. And our operating expenses have been flat. Our employees have not received increases. And I think that I, it's important that we understand that compared with our peer towns, the town of Fairfield doesn't contribute that much towards their library system. And of the town appropriations as a percent of town tax revenues, Fairfield contributes 1.76%, and that includes Pequot Library as well. And towns like Wilton, Westport are at two point, over 2%, and Greenwich and Darien are even higher. So we're, the town is already not really funding the libraries as strongly as their peer towns. And then when we add the additional 68%, or the approximately, you know, a little over 800,000 that Pequot Library is putting into the library system, we feel we're, our volunteers are working very hard to provide services and really value to the town of Fairfield. So looking at our model, which is really a mutually beneficial model of a private town partnership, we hope you'll reconsider, and I don't know what the political dynamics of trying to have the request go back to 350,000, but we would request that so that we can continue to carry on our services in the quality and the quantity that we've been doing with the town. So I guess the message that I'd like to reinforce is that Pequot Library, we're really providing irreplaceable and unduplicated value to the town of Fairfield. Questions?
Martha, thank you very much, and, but I'll open, do my colleagues have any questions at this point?
Do you want to go?
I'll go, if you guys are.
Oh, yeah.
Martha, it, you're absolutely right, Pequot is a phenomenally unique resource in terms of the town. And we've talked before, and I think I've mentioned it, that one of my earliest memories of Pequot is sitting out on the front lawn, and I must have been four or five years old, and kind of literally learning to read or having a story, celebration out there, and it really introduced me to the library in Pequot at a very early age. Going, fast forwarding a few years, I was in high school, and one of the, the kind of neatest projects we did when I was in high school was this kind of audiovisual project, and we used the resources and the books and magazines at Pequot to really help put that together. There wasn't another place to go, and we did get an A on it, so thank you very much.
Well, I'm sure Stanley Crane helped you.
Just a phenomenally, you know, educational experience, because we were doing so much on our own, and we had the resources at Pequot when we didn't have those resources at the high school libraries or elsewhere to do that. And then to, most recently, having a chance to, you mentioned that the great halls, the music, I had a chance to hear Art Garfunkel at the library.
We had Art Garfunkel last summer.
Yes.
And, you know, he sought us out because he'd been struggling with his voice, and he had heard that the quality of the acoustics in our auditorium were such a unique experience that his agent actually contacted us to see if we would, he would be able to perform there.
Well, it's just a phenomenal event, and I left there feeling like I'd spent two hours with Art Garfunkel in his living room, because he kind of talked and sang and read poetry, and it was just a, everybody walking out, you felt like you knew everybody. And so I think that that's a phenomenally valuable cultural resource for Fairfield, and I think, you're absolutely right, it's, I think, and hopefully part of having you here today is to help publicize everything that Pequot does, so more Fairfield will take advantage of that. Now, do you, you have a website?
We do have a website, it's pequotlibrary.org, and I really would personally invite all of our citizens to please come in and visit us, because if you haven't been there, and I'm actually surprised, having, you know, I guess, known about what a gem it really is in the town, that some of our citizens have not been there. We hosted a business after hour with the Chamber of Commerce, and several of the people who attended had not been into the library, but they, since, many of them have joined. So it's been very good.
Well, and certainly, as I get around town and talk both to the Fairfield Museum, as well as Fairfield Theater Company, as well as the Fairfield Public Libraries, that I'd like to see more joint programs and collaboration from that standpoint. I think you're making some great initiatives, but I think it's another great way to pull our community together and get people to participate in all of the resources that Fairfield has to offer.
And we are working hard to do that. I do want to also point out, though, that unlike a number of those entities that you mentioned, we cover 100% of our capital budget as well. And that's something that, in terms of the value to the town, and we do have ongoing needs. Right now, we're in the process of needing upgrades in terms of our computers, systems within the library, and those are additional strains in terms of being able to fund those. And we'd like to ultimately, the 70s wing, that's the children's wing on the back half of the building, we'd like to see that refurbished as well, because both to refurbish it and also to make it handicapped accessible. So we'll be working more closely with the board to evaluate that. Thank you.
Those were some of my stories, but any other comments from my colleagues?
Sure. Martha, thank you for, for coming out and giving us, giving us an update on Pequot. Going back to last year's budget process, we've learned a lot about what Pequot does, much more than I ever knew in prior years, and much more than most people or many people knew at all. And I want to thank you for providing all that insight and that information, both last spring during the budget process and for coming forward now, so that we can remind everyone what an asset you are, or what an asset the library is, and what a resource it is for the library itself, the music, the arts, the culture, the 365 different types of events that you have in any given year, and all of the history and heritage that you provide to our town and you protect for our town. It's wonderful. And the other comment I wanted to make is, you are a complement to our other branches. I mean, there's no, you know, you weren't duplicative in any way, and I see our two libraries functioning very nicely with Pequot and working together as a team for our town, and the services that you provide are both complementary and additional to many of the services that we get across town. And with everyone having access to Pequot, it performs, or it, it forms a great nucleus for anybody in town to go to any one of our branches.
That's right, it's fully interchangeable.
Absolutely, and it's wonderful. So thank you very much for all those efforts and for the update. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Kristin?
I would concur in terms of the thanks, Martha, for being here today and for all the work you're doing. I've seen you at the library many times in the past year, especially, it's been wonderful to be exposed to some new events that I hadn't participated in before at Pequot. I think today, in terms of the presentation, I appreciate the, kind of the breadth of presentation in terms of mission and programs as well as budget. I was expecting that we would have more of a conversation about the budget process and that with respect to funding, particularly when we meet together at the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen Joint Hearing, so I, I'll save some of my questions probably for then, which is, you know, when we can dive into some of that, but.
I too, just as when I commented with the chamber, I agree with Mike that, for me, I love seeing the complementarity of programs and groups such as yours, and you, Mike, you mentioned the Fairfield Museum and History Center, the chamber, you talked about the public schools, Martha, and I think that that is a phenomenal way for us to be working together. And I think that is a model that I support wholeheartedly, and I know that you've been doing that and will continue to do that, so I appreciate that tremendously. I agree that Pequot is a unique resource to our community and within our community, and it's an integral part of the community, so I look forward to the conversation. I will, I will have other questions when we, when we meet to talk about the budget process, but we'll save them for then, and I just want to thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and I also, because of the whole issue last year with the budget process, word travels fast with the fact that our funding was cut, and I've been getting emails all day, people saying they would, should they show up tonight for this meeting? And I said, you know, I know the room, I don't think it's a, I don't think there's going to be enough room for everybody to show up, so, but I do want to voice the concern and the interest in the citizens of the town relative to the funding for Pequot Library. So, but thank you very much for the opportunity here.
No, Martha, thank you very much. Thank you for taking time today to come and talk to us.
Yeah, anytime, it's a pleasure.
Just, just for the record, I know you came on Pequot as Executive Director just a couple of years ago, and you're doing a phenomenal job, so thank you from all of Fairfield for your work and your efforts there.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Land Acquisition Commission. To here, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Land Acquisition Commission. Resolve that the town of Fairfield accept as a donation from Lilian E. Fazekus property known as 224 Riverview Circle, comprising approximately .12 acres, said property to be donated subject to existing real estate taxes. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And, let's see, I guess just to be clear to the board, and in terms of what this is, they're in essence donating it to the town for forgiveness of back taxes. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tom Stanky.
He is prepared. Sir?
The property in question is located on the Mill River, it's a little over an acre and it is right here, it's adjacent contiguous to the Drake Lane Open Space Area and on the west side of the river, directly opposite the Millsbough Open Space Area. And you have in your view, it's just approximately 120 feet long and roughly 40 feet wide, and it's at the end, as you go down Ry, excuse me, Riverview, it's on, it's the last section on the left, as you look at it, as of yesterday, it's essentially maintained by the abutting owner as a cleared area around the river, out to the riverbank. And you can see that Drake Lane on the, to the, to the left on the side of the photo, the Mill River is just beyond the, excuse me, the snowpack, and Millsbough Open Space is on the opposite side. The second photo is looking from Drake Lane Open Space, southerly or downstream toward the property in question, gives you an idea of what its condition is. And it, as proposed, the town is, is looking at $6,277.12 that covers the past taxes, back taxes, interest and lien on the, on the property. I anticipate that if the RTM town accepts it, it would be designated Conservation Open Space, would include our management of the area, essentially passive, to identify it with a small open space sign, perhaps the size of that, the box in the corner here. It would be, it's a part of the neighborhood layout, so it isn't, it isn't a destination open space, it's one that you would come onto essentially from the Drake Lane, from the larger, larger piece, and its value is primarily in protection of the river. It's one of four lots that are adjacent to each other, these are the dead ends of Riverview and Rygate, they went up in the same Fazekus subdivision back in '51. And the lots are indicated as reserved for parks purposes when they were first, when the map was compiled. And I'm now trying to find out whether or not TPC accepted them with any conditions or if they were subsequently merged with the abutting owners, but they are carried as separate, as independent parcels, independent lots for the assessor. With that management, as I mentioned, it's minimal, it's a very clean area, very nice, well-kept neighborhood. And I would anticipate when we go through the adjacent Drake Lane property to clean it up, it would be a walk-through on this lot, if there were, if anything there, or just to keep track on a quarterly basis. But I see it as a really very nice passive, be identified, not only with a sign, but usually we put sear posts along the side of the boundary, and we allow it to go to a, a natural buffer, tree, shrub type of vegetation in the area. Any questions?
Just, my colleagues?
A quick one, I think you might have already answered it, though. You talked about its major purpose, it's going to be passive, but it's
You talked about its major purpose, it's going to be passive, but its major purpose would be the protection of the river.
Yes.
Could you just touch on that and how that works a little bit?
The soil is sand and gravel, and that's indicative of the, we have the Mill Plain Aquifer. That's the hydraulic companies. We've got the pump station on Brookside Drive, and that's a source, has been a source of potable water in the past and may be needed in the future. And this parcel, and others like it, the pieces we have, the river tracts, Mill River tracts, are intended to protect that aquifer, protect the water quality in the river, maintain low-flow discharge after recharge of the aquifer in high water, maintain plant and animal habitats. It's, there are lots of fish, waterfowl, mammals, birds that frequent the area, moving up and down the river corridor. It's really quite nice.
Thank you for that. The only other question I'll have when insurance ran is liabilities and issues like that that might arise from the acquisitions.
Kristen?
And this may also be firsthand, but you just mentioned something about your finding out from TPZ, that there was a question there that sounds like it remains unresolved in terms of how TPZ-
A question on the-
Accepted those, yes.
The designation?
Right.
What, no one has a question? I have the question. When I saw that, I-
Tom, I'm surprised. You have questions?
Yeah. It's very clearly an independent parcel, title searched, maintained and in the Fazekas ownership. No question about that at all.
And they've been paying taxes on it for a number of years up until-
Yes, they have. Well, they did up until, well, Fazekas now owns it, but they had earlier, we're currying on it. But no, the question is, is how did we get from the subdivision posed layout where they're reserved to today where they're independent lots in the ownership of the abutting or some other third-party owner?
If I might, just to clarify in and of itself, this is not big enough to be a building lot or anything like that.
No, no. It's, if you were to, it's an expanded side yard. It's about the size of this, bigger than this room, but it is, it is not a building lot, and it would not make it.
One other question. I noticed in the land acquisition minutes that there were some other pieces of property that were being discussed and that those, the commission didn't find any benefit to the town in acquiring these properties. I wondered if you were part of that conversation at all with them or if that was simply the commission?
I was not.
Since that's the question, if you could just come on up to the podium and introduce yourself.
Mike Widmer, Chairman of the Land Acquisition Commission.
If you could say that again when you're behind the podium.
Mike Widmer, Chairman of the Land Acquisition Commission.
Thank you.
Kristen, your question, you're right. Fazekas family did approach us last year with three parcels. The Riverview Circle parcel was the one that we found to be really the most valuable, an important piece along the Mill River, adjacent to existing town-owned open space. The other two, are you familiar with the other two? We couldn't really find them. And almost with these subdivisions back in the 50s, sometimes there were strips of land along a road, 30 feet long or whatever these might have been, that I think have really been swallowed up by the existing adjacent property owners. So we didn't find any value in the town acquiring a piece of property that really we couldn't delineate as to where it actually was, if that makes sense.
It makes sense.
And I think the Fazekas were developer.
Was.
Yeah.
Much as I grew up in a neighborhood where you can't find the properties, it hurts me to hear that that land has no value, but it did us a use.
Coming from Land Acquisition Commission, we're looking to acquire valuable pieces of property.
Oh, that's again.
And I-
Zing.
Sorry to interrupt.
But, you know, it's, we did not find any value in there, although I guess there is still probably tax being levied upon those parcels. This tax was, I think, a couple hundred dollars a year for Riverview. I'm not even sure what the other parcels are, and I'm not sure what kind of amnesty they could get or what they may deal with those pieces of property. But the Fazekas family did approach us, asking us to take a look. And to answer your question, we voted on recommending just the Riverview Circle parcel for acquisition.
And the primary value there being, because it abuts Mill River and abuts open space, it's contiguous property to other town interests, and that's where we derive the value from.
Yeah, exactly. Those two things, one, along the Mill River, I think it was the most important thing, Mill River obviously being our main tributary and the health of that river being so important. But then, when we found it was adjacent to Drake Open Space and existing town-owned open space, it was to us a natural that, for the existing tax, that we would acquire the property, recommend that we acquire the property.
Yeah.
Certainly.
So thank you for that. That's helpful. And just from a process standpoint, you know, obviously interested in that conversation happening, if there were other questions that you had about the property, I would assume that you would have asked them of Tom Stanky, who's got that knowledge and expertise, and that you reach out to other officials that are appropriate if there are questions.
Agreed for the other two parcels?
Or for anything going forward into the future. That was part of my question. It wasn't necessarily reflected in the minutes, so I just wondered-
Yeah, sure.
What kind of outside expertise that you rely on?
Yeah, they've got tremendous amount of knowledge and wealthy resource for us when we're looking into parcels and such, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I just want to point out to the board, Mr. Widmer's, the new chair of the Land Acquisition Committee, and I want to applaud you on your enthusiasm and approach. We had a chance to sit down and talk. I was very impressed with the thoroughness and how you're approaching this whole task. For volunteer, I got to thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service to the town.
Appreciate that. That was important. Been on the commission less than a year. And one of my first opportunities was to say, let's go meet with some folks. So I'm with Tom, with yourself, Dave Brand from Aspetac, Miley Bull from Audubon, Jim Went in planning and zoning, so thank you.
Tremendous approach. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board?
Just wanted to, neglected to mention that we had samples of the property, ran the RECRAF eight metals, no contamination, did not encounter any problems. It's clean.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, Tom.
Mr. Carl, I think you have some questions for the town attorney?
Quickly, are there any legal loopholes or entanglements that we need to be concerned about with this acquisition contract?
We had a title searched on titles clean except for a large number of tax liens on the property going back to 1998. I think they're paying maybe a hundred dollars a year in taxes. I mean, it wasn't much. I've spoken to Cindy Booker, the tax collector. Once the town owns this, she'll just, because the town will be obligated to pay taxes, she'll just wipe it off. I would ask that you refer this for a report to TPZ. We're going to follow the procedure that's used in the ordinance for acquiring property. There's a procedure that says that the Conservation Commission can accept property with the consent of the RTM. And we're kind of doing that, and because there's some taxes that are involved here, I think the better procedure is get the report from the RTM, I mean from TPZ, and then we'll send it to the RTM for their approval.
Makes sense.
Do we have to change the resolution in front of us in order to do that?
The wording? Do you want to see it? Do you have it?
Because this reads, or does it, this doesn't refer to TPZ, but if that's the normal process, then that's how it goes.
That is the process contained in the ordinance. You don't have to change it.
So we don't have to change the resolution, we just have to route it to TPZ and then-
Yes, and they'll give a report. I think the report only affects the vote that has to be placed at the RTM. If they didn't approve it, the RTM could still approve, but I think it might take a two-thirds vote rather than majority. And if you'll notice, the resolution says that we're accepting the donation subject to taxes, which means that these people won't be obligated to pay any of the back taxes. I actually have the deed, Mr. Fazekas, I sent it to him and he had Lillian sign it, so I got the deed. We're ready to go whenever it's approved.
Jen, if you can make a note that that goes from, our approval goes to the TPZ and then from there to RTM? Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Stanky. Thank you, Mr. Widmer.
Thank you.
Do you want your photos?
Yeah.
Yeah, please, you can use them again.
Reduce, reuse.
No, use them again.
Even better than recycle. Thank you.
All right, next up, item nine from the Board of Education. To here consider and act upon the following requests from the Superintendent of Schools. Resolve that the town of Fairfield, one, establish the Mill Hill Roof Building Committee; two, authorize the preparation of a schematic drawings and outline specifications for this product, project, sorry; and three, authorize the Board of Education to file an application for a school building grant. Have a motion? A second?
Second.
All right, just by way of explanation, I will provide a little bit of the support for this. Going back to our non-recurring projects, we approved a school project to renovate the roofs, Mill Hill School. As part of that process, to get that started, the school wants to apply for a project number with a state. In order to apply for that, they need these resolutions in place, passed by our board and the RTM. So this is kind of an administrative procedure to get that off the ground and rolling. We will come back later with a building committee in charge. Given the size of this project, we may not have to have an independent building committee. We may have some alternatives, but we'll evaluate those. And again, that will come back before this board, before anything happens beyond that. But this lets the school district get started on some of the administrative things to get the project rolling.
Sounds like a plan.
Any questions beyond that?
No.
All right, just the school district was tied up in a number of areas, given the budget season, given some other projects going on. I let them know because this was administrative, that they didn't really have to be here for this. I did suggest that they do attend the RTM meeting because we have so many new members that may not have seen these before. This, if you remember, is the typical wording or phrases that we pass at the start of each building committee. And it's really a state, the wording is from the state. We pass this to make us eligible for the reimbursement process.
Good.
All right, any further questions or discussion here?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next up, from the tax collector. To consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector and the amount recommended. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any comments?
I have an amendment to add at the end of the sentence, comma, $5,236.31.
Second.
All right, so the amendment is before us. Any discussion on the amendment? Are we ready to vote on the amendment?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the motion stands before us as amended. Any further discussion?
No.
Are we ready to vote on the amended motion?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Done, all right. Thank you. To here consider and act upon any communications, we don't have to act on any communications. I did have one letter-
Look at it.
-from UI that they have asked that we do our best to publicize and make the public aware of the following. That the National Electric Safety Code specifically prohibits the attachment of foreign objects on UI utility poles. Obstructions, signs, posters, notices, and other attachments shall not be placed on poles without the concurrence of the owner, which is UI, not the property owner. Supporting structures should be kept free from other climbing hazards such as tacks, nails, vines, and through bolts not properly trimmed. The issue there and their concern is that their workers may need to climb those poles to repair utility connections, and those obstructions make it both unsafe and difficult for the workers to climb those. So they've asked us to publicize that. It seemed appropriate to use this meeting to do that. And I can, if you'd like copies of this, just let Jen know and we'll get you copies for your records if you'd like. So that being the last of the communications. And then, item 12, to here consider and act upon any other new business which would promptly come before this meeting. While there's no new business as a motion, there is a brief discussion I'd like to bring up and get your input on. As we're going through the security plan, as I'm sitting down with the police chief and school superintendent, we're talking about some of the things that come up as recommendations, some of those are very obvious and very public. And I'll point to the buzzer system at the elementary schools. It's very visible. Certainly, when you're talking about funding for that, something can be discussed in public. There are other things that come up that may be best kept in confidence or in private, so we're not publicizing those to everybody out there. A partial example of that, certain things we're trying to restrict a bit more, are floor plans to our schools. Those are now officially harder to get. Prior to that, they were, you know, easy to get. We realized that that's one of the steps we can take towards a more secure environment. In looking at this, and as we evaluate facility enhancements that may cost money, the question becomes, how do you properly evaluate those from our public fiduciary standpoint without basically describing all these improvements in public, which kind of defeats the purpose of security? It's kind of like having a key code. You don't want to tell everybody what it is. So we're looking a way to do that and kind of balance those two objectives. One of the suggestions is that we set up a security oversight committee with representatives from this board, Board of Finance, RTM, and Board of Education. But basically, a smaller group of folks that can be kept up to date by police, by fire, by the superintendent as we're looking at some of the improvements to schools. And that way, when it goes before the other boards, we're not in a position to have a display of all of those items to the boards. Now, I don't know what a percentage would be, but it might be something like 90% of it, the projects are totally okay to be discussed in public because they're going to be very visible with what we're doing. However, that 10% might be something that's crucial to a security component, and it's not something that we want to have out there in public describing in detail how that works and what takes place. So the idea is to kind of balance that with this committee. So I wanted to propose that, get your thoughts and input, and then perhaps we can have a more detailed discussion and consideration in our next meeting. And the other component of that, that is not something that is just set up for this year, this process. It is something that I would see ongoing as we continue to improve security in our schools, as we look at new building projects or renovations that might include some of these, and also as we move away from the schools and start to look at the town facilities, we'll have some of the same issues coming up. So I see this as an ongoing committee that would address that.
Okay.
So any comments, questions, or thoughts?
To clarify, you're raising the idea you'd like for us to think about it, and we'll come back and have a further discussion.
Or certainly if you'd like to either let me know any questions, email any questions, so if there's any backup or alternatives that can be prepared along with it.
Well, it sounds like a sensible approach to a very complicated, you know, project or, you know, task, you know, as we attempt to balance the needs of security versus freedom of information and all that stuff. So it sounds, with what I know of it, it sounds like it might be an approach that would be certainly workable and fair to all and allow us, or allow the committee to, you know, move forward with the appropriate plans for security for all of our buildings while disseminating enough information to be open and fair about it, but withholding enough to provide or to protect the security that they're, you know, charged to provide, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's a balance. At some point, a committee, be it a formal building committee or a maintenance group from school, comes and says, we'd like to do, you know, we'd like $100,000 to do the following, of which, most of which is probably going to be public enough that there's no issue, that there might be $20,000. You've got, right now, there's a range of things that towns have done out there from what we're hearing back. I've seen some towns describe their security arrangements and saying, we're going to do this at every entrance, we're going to do this here. And I'm like, I'm not sure you necessarily want to say all that in public. On the other hand, there are, there was another town that passed a $2 million bonding resolution for security improvements to school with no description and no discussion about what's taking place in that. And I have a hard time believing all $2 million is necessarily, what I'm going to use the word is confidential or high-security or non-public information.
So you get one here, one here.
So I think what we're doing here is trying to provide a balance, both to provide credibility to the various boards that somebody is looking at this. It's not just, and on the other hand, realizing that it's about- It's not just, and on the other hand, realizing that it's about security. And we, much like we have certain medical records that are private, we have certain other things, even though that it might help a discussion, there's a certain right to patient privacy or personal privacy or confidentiality. Security gets defeated if everybody knows what it is.
Fair enough.
So that's, that's the objective. And certainly I welcome any thoughts or suggestions that would help us have our discussion next month. I don't, it's not like, or next week, next meeting, rather. It's not, there's, there's not a critical timeframe to this. So I think it's more important to get it right. But I wanted to start this discussion.
Well, I-
Agreed.
I would concur. The idea of balance between the security and the FOI and, and as well, the, I think it'll be important going forward to get the buy-in from the various boards and committees to recognize that if we are asking a representative from each group, that we are going to place our trust in that individual to thereby not have to have some of those conversations. Because I think we're an inquisitive group of elected officials. We have a lot of questions and, and we really like to understand and dive into the issues. And this is one that there will have to be a balance-
Absolutely.
-with that. And the sensitivity to, clearly, obviously, the FOIA laws, but as well as the fact that both at our schools and at our town buildings, that we want to be able to keep people safe.
I think it's, it's more the credibility with the boards. From FOIA, security is, is an acceptable, acceptable exception. That's aseptible exception.
Okay.
However, if, if I'm sitting here as a board and you're asking me to vote on something, I'd like to know more about what's inside the black box you just presented.
Mm-hmm.
And in some cases, I need to know that somebody's looked at that and established it as credible. No disrespect to our police chief or superintendent who might be proposing that, but just to provide that, that extra layer of credibility and review. Now, most, again, the vast majority of things that will be proposed, at least is, I understand it, will be things that can be discussed. And the buzzer is the thing that comes back to me the most often, but-
And I would just add, it's not just about credibility. I think it's the bridge, right? It's that bridge of communication between, you know, the folks who are doing the day-to-day work, obviously Dr. Title, Chief McNamara, yourself, that those, you're, you know, doing the day-to-day and then for those of us who are not involved in the day-to-day, that we have a bridge of communication in that respect and for each of the various boards. So I think that that, I think it's a helpful idea. I will look forward to talking about it more now that you've brought it up and thinking about it a little bit and coming back to the conversation, I think would be great.
Right. And that, that bridge is a very good point. The other thing that comes to mind initially for me is, you know, the, the comfort that may be something that an ongoing effort like this will be able to provide to our, to our citizens and to our parents and our students. So they will know that while they might not know every little thing about what is going on, they will know that there are things going on that are security-driven to provide for the safety of their children and their families. And so I, I think from that perspective, it will help from a public relations aspect to, to continue to let everyone know in town that we are addressing the matter, thinking about it and finding solutions. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other comments? And again, any, either questions come up or things to be appropriate, let me know and perhaps we can put together a little bit of a discussion outline for our next meeting so that we all have time to think on that. And then with that, I think-
I had one quick question.
Go ahead.
It might be more for Jen. On calendar, for April, do we have, do you know our April schedule? I forgot to email you before.
The 2nd and the 23rd.
So we are not scheduled the week of school vacation, the third week? Okay, that, that was my question.
The 1st and 4th Wednesday.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Then with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you both again.